I call to order the regular session of the Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners. It's Tuesday, September 30th and 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Kulianis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kulyas.
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight, our reflection will be Reverend Guy Thompson from the Greater Life Christian Church, and we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. O gracious God, our Father, we come to you at this time, giving you thanks for our mayor, for our commissioners, for our fire chief, for our police chief, for the leaders and all of the citizens of this great city. We ask that you intervene into this meeting, guide our every word, our every action, so that what is said and done will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. We thank you for all of the goodwill and the good services that shall come forth as a result of this meeting. We welcome you and we thank you. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we've got two special presentations. We have one with our representative, our state representative, Adam Anderson, and then we're going to have the best of the best. So, and you can see Tarpon's business community is on fire because we have a lot of best of the best. So, but before we do that, we're going to have a special presentation from Representative Anderson. I'm going to ask the board to all come up and to receive this.
It's a big check. It's a big check.
Yeah. I want to introduce you. Let me introduce you because this is really a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, it's a big deal. So, you know, yeah, it's a big check and it's, and this is, this is our state rep. He's, you know, and this is, he's delivering for us. And first of all, before we, I want you to give him a big hand of applause because he came through for this city. Our city, our city manager and some representatives from the city went up and met with the representative and, you know, expressed to him the needs we had here in the community. And again, he got us in the appropriations bill. He got us the money that we need desperately to help us with stormwater. And anyways, I just want, again, we're thanking him, but he's going to have a few words to say before he gives us this big giant check.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, I will be very brief. But, and I appreciate the opportunity to be welcomed here to, to your commission meeting this evening. I have the privilege of representing the north part of Pinellas County in the Florida House, and I always say that the city of Tarpon Springs really is the, the crown jewel of North Pinellas. So, it's really great to be here with all of you. I think it's pretty fitting that we're here presenting this appropriation check, which, which covers three different unique stormwater projects throughout the city. And it's, it's ironic that it happens to be right, right now, tonight, which is the one-year anniversary essentially of that midpoint between Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton. And if you think about where you were a year ago, if you weren't cleaning out your own home, you were probably doing what, what me and my family were doing is helping our neighbors, our, the rest of our family and our friends clean out their home. And this was right around the time where we took a break from cleaning up and saw the news and said, oh, shoot, there's another one headed right for us. And suddenly, the, the attention was shifted from cleanup to just getting as much of the debris out of our communities, away from our homes, out of the streets as we possibly could. And you probably remember, you know, we all wanted that to happen a lot quicker than it really did. Your city did a phenomenal job at, at that cleanup effort, better than most cities, I can say, across the entire state. And you have these, these gentlemen and women here that are next to me to, to thank for that. I also think back to that time and, and I was in constant communication with Chief Young. And I remember I, when that second storm was coming, my family and I evacuated to Tallahassee. And we had already taken in all of our family by the coast at our house. We had nowhere else to put them. Then we were evacuated, so, so we ended up going to Tallahassee. And it was really a blessing because being in Tallahassee, I was able to communicate with Chief Young, other members of our, our local governments to help coordinate the resources that we need because it was right down the street at our State Emergency Operations Center. And I think, think back, you know, we were, Chief had called me and he said, we're, we're having some trouble at the hospital. Can you help us out? And we were able to make some calls and work through the USC, get, get the power back on. And then, then he called me and said, Adam, I'm really worried about the gas. You know, we have this massive fuel shortage. And we were able to get a free fuel station put right here in Tarpon Springs at, at St. P College and, at St. P College campus in Tarpon. So, I tell you those stories to just remind all of us that having this open communication is very, very important, not just important during a disaster, but we want to keep that open dialogue. And I welcome the opportunity to continue to work on projects like this. Senator Hooper has been a rock-solid senate partner for our district in, in the Florida Senate. He unfortunately couldn't be here, but he did tell me earlier today, he said, Adam, when you go and talk to the city commission, tell them that we want to get even more done for them.
Good.
So, and we will do it.
You're an accountant?
One million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand and five dollars.
Don't forget about the other one.
Again, this is, this is our representative working for us. This is a example of what he does up there in Tallahassee, looking after all of us here in our garbage room. So, we appreciate him. So, thank you so much.
Deposit only? Hold on, we're going to have our.
I appreciate you.
Chief Engineer.
Chief Engineer, thanks, everyone. And thanks again, Representative Anderson. My name is Bob Robertson. I'm the Project Administration Department Director. And I just want to let everyone know that this money is going to get to work right away. In fact, tonight on the consent agenda, there are three items to approve grant agreements that essentially get that money working right away. So, we're excited about that. We're also excited about, another item on the agenda tonight is a resolution to approve the, get the, the board to give their support behind applying for next year's application. And in that one, we're going even bigger. We're going at about $2.2 million for the request. So, thank you for your guidance on that. We'll look forward to this check next year. Thanks, everyone.
Is it still on? Did you shut it off? No, it's on. Okay, our next, our next item is Best of the Best. So, I'm going to get Karen Lemmons, our Economic Development Coordinator, and I'm going to ask Steve Grant from the Tampa Bay Times to come up. He's, he's total media and he's totally part of this whole experience. So, you know, in 2019, my CPA firm won Best of the Best, and Chris, Mayor Alahoussis at that time had invited us up to, to acknowledge us. And, and we were just, I think we were just like in this first row. I think there was only a handful of us. And now, since then, and now we're here at 2025, and we've got how many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six Best of the Best. And when you think about how you get this, you get this by your, your customers, your clients, they're your patients, they're the ones who are voting for you. So, again, when I won it, I didn't, didn't know I won it till I won it. But some of my clients actually thought I did a good job and, and they voted for me. But in, but that's what happens here. So, this is all a testament to the, you know, the, what you've built and, and your, your relationship with all of your, again, your clients, your patients, your, your customers. And so, it's a great testament to you. So, the fact that we've gone from just a handful now to 26. And Karen, I'm sure you're proud because you're our Economic Development Person Director. So, you, now that you see your, your, our city is doing so well, then you should be proud of that.
Yeah.
Okay, you should. You should. What we're going to do, because we got so many, we're, I'm going to, we're going to announce the, the, the winners. You're going to come up and you're going to get a picture. Now, you, we're not going to ask you to take your own little home pictures. We've got a professional here with a nice expensive camera. And then he's, we've got all your email addresses. We're going to email you your picture. And then what I'm going to ask you to do is come on down on the, in front of the dais here. And then, while we congregate, we're going to get the commission to all come up. We're going to congregate, and our, our photographer is going to run upstairs and take a picture from right up there. So, have, we'll have one big group shot. So, everybody will get your individual shot, and then you'll get a, the group shot emailed to you. So, you don't have to worry about getting somebody up here to take pictures, okay? So, who do we got? Advent Health, North Pinellas. Come on down? Arison Insurance Services. They couldn't make it tonight, but we're still acknowledging them. Aries Roofing. Congratulations. Congratulations. Here, hold your, hold your award. Thank you. The Court of Two Sisters, again, couldn't make it tonight, I don't think. Currents Restaurant. Congratulations. Oh, this is a special. I wish he was here because he would make us all laugh. Dobie's Funeral Home. He is funny for a morti-, he is very funny for a mortician, but he, he's not here tonight. Okay, hold on. Halas Restaurant. Home Team Services Group. Congratulations. Here, stand right here. Stand in front of me. Insurance Associates. Jim Grant's funny too. Too bad he's not here. Kim Adams, real estate agent. Mr. Sivlaki. Eight years in a row for Mr. Sivlaki. Nico's Grill House. So, this is the start of eight in a row for you. One Amazing Find. Okay, my granddaughter's favorite, Orange Cycle Creamery. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Rusty Bellies. St. Luke's Cataract and Laser Institute. St. Petersburg College. It's the microphone. Yeah, just. Susan's Flags and More. Tarpon Springs Distillery. Oh, Tarpon Springs Performing Arts. Come on, this is Home Team. Tarpon Total Healthcare. TGH Urgent Care Powered by Fast Track. The Healing Hedge Witch. The Meadows Ave Q A Cove Community. It's like the Academy Awards. This is great. Congratulations. Tim's Performance Center. And the White Crane Clinic. Okay, so our. Yeah, so what we're going to do is we're going to get the commission to all come up here with the city manager and. Get a picture, too. Yeah. Come on, Irene, just get a picture.
All right, everybody, look up here. Give your best smiles.
Always take the over. It's never under. What, on time? Yes. We don't have time on the thing. We don't have time on the thing. Brandon, sit down. Brandon?
Was it something I said? I will change, I will change.
Alright, that was fun, wasn't it? That was fun. Okay, so we're opening the part of the meeting for public comments. Anyone who would like to make a public comment on anything that is not on this agenda can get up and speak. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address. Come right up here to this microphone here.
Evening. Peter Lack, this is 514 Ashland Avenue. Tip to you, Mike. Today's reading proverb, sixteen, one through twenty. To man belongs the plans of the heart, but from the Lord comes the reply of the tongue. All a man's ways seem innocent to him, but motives are weighed by the Lord. Commit to the Lord whatever you do, and your plans will succeed. The Lord works out everything for his own ends, even the wicked for a day of disaster. The Lord detests all the proud of heart. Be sure of this, they will not go unpunished. Through love and faithfulness, sin is atoned for. Through the fear of the Lord, a man avoids evil. When a man's ways are pleasing to the Lord, he makes even his enemies live at peace with them. Better little with righteousness than much gain with injustice. In his heart, a man plans his course, but the Lord determines his steps. Lips of a king speak as an oracle, and his mouth should not betray justice. Honest scales and balances are from the Lord, and all the weights in the bag are of his making. Kings detest wrongdoing, but a throne is established through righteousness. Kings take pleasure in honest lips; they value a man who speaks the truth. A king's wrath is a messenger of death, but a wise man will appease it. When a king's face brightens, it means life; his favor is like a rain cloud in spring. How much better to get wisdom than gold, to choose understanding rather than silver? The highway of the upright avoids evil; he who guards his way guards his soul. Pride goes before destruction, a haughty spirit before a fall. Better to be lonely in spirit and among the oppressed than to share plunder with the proud. Whoever gives heed to instruction prospers, and blessed is he who trusts in the Lord. Times like these, I'm really having to trust in the Lord with all that's going on in the news. So much death and destruction. And yet, sometimes we feel powerless. But we aren't. We just need to be brave to speak out against the injustices that we see before us. What's going on in the Ukraine and Gaza is immensely heartening, disheartening. We need to find a way to stop wars. It's not by building more bombs and ships and stuff. It's by reaching out and understanding that they, just like us, want to live a normal life to raise their kids, their families.
Thank you, Peter. Three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Next, please state your name and address.
Susan Swenson, 327 Manatee Lane. I just want to preface it with, I am a wife, I am a mother, I am a grandmother of ten, I am soon to be a great-grandmother. I own several businesses, and I operate one by myself. But what I want to recommend is, if I can find the time to listen to all the committees, Sustainability, Heritage Review Board, and every other one, every time they're on, whether it's, I'm getting ready in the morning, I'm taking a walk, I'm doing something, I'm listening. I would recommend for all the commissioners, as well as everybody on every committee to read it, because we're not connected. I listened to the Sustainability, and I feel like yelling through there, or the Heritage Board, Reboard, and when you guys come up, like tonight you are, for a few of the items that have already come through the planning board. If you watched us, you could see what we were thinking, not that that had to make your decision, but we're not gonna be cohesive as a community unless we listen to others and we understand what's going on from one team to the other, because sometimes I think we're just in our silos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Lori Weaver, 451 East Tarpon Avenue. Gentlemen. Recently, while I was in Dunedin, I came across this map. And this is a walking tour map of Dunedin. It's on a billboard on a couple different ends of their city. And tourists can pick this up, peruse it, and be able to see what's available. And we have a lot of retail and restaurants here that are off the beaten path, and I think it would behoove the city to invest in something like this, or to encourage some of the other agencies that do this kind of thing, to invest in something like this as a boost for our tourism. And on another note, I would like to perhaps plant the seed that maybe we could benefit from a director of tourism in this city, as opposed to maybe investing in rebranding or other avenues that don't seem to lead us anywhere. A director of tourism would network for us, would optimize our social media, and also would work with hotels and conventions and different things to bring that type of revenue to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you share that map with the city manager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I give him to the chief?
Yeah, sure. Anyone else?
Good evening, Juliana Day, 413 East Oakwood Street, here in lovely Tarpon Springs. On behalf of Peaceful Tarpon, I would like to thank the mayor and the board of commissioners for supporting us and the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs for our first peace poll. It was a lovely, lovely event, and it was held here in Tarpon Springs at the Splash Park, and if you go by there, you can still see and visit it, and also read what it says and about peace. We expressed the peace and the unity in our community and our city that day, street by street, to foster peace. And it was a lovely gesture, and I'm looking forward to more and more of these polls being put out throughout the whole city of Tarpon Springs, at the different parks. They even make like the miniature polls to put out even at the different schools, so that our childrens would know what peace is and unity within the community. On another note, as being, if it's an over. The vice president of Martha Luther King Foundation here in Tarpon Springs, I'd like to thank the board of commissioners. We had a lovely time here at the former art center for our first-ever annual comedy gospel punchline show. And I want to thank you all, we also will be having other things being put on in our city for our scholarship and benefit program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Katie Taylor, 657 Haven Place, Tarpon Springs, Florida. As president of Rose Cemetery Association here in Tarpon Springs, the historical black cemetery on Jasmine, I would like to thank Chris Carter, the Public Works Director, Pat Nice, and the Police Department, and Bob Robertson and Marco for having the dumpsters put out. But Mr. Carter walked that whole cemetery with us, and I was thanked, we thanked him for his patience and just going around hearing the history of this cemetery, because on the outside, out of boundary, which is city property, we found something that looked like a grave, and one of the professors at the college did say that it looks like a grave. So we're looking forward to the follow-up meeting with the mayor to find out exactly what we can do about that situation, as well as determine what address does Rose sit on, because as we spoke to y'all before about, they got four addresses for Rose. But as far as the cleanup, the cleanup was a success. Thank Pat for finding us getting more bags when we needed it. Mr. Robertson made sure that we had, and Marco made sure we had the dumpster out there. The Police Department, one of the officers even helped us put out stakes, so we thank all y'all for that. And also, we're looking forward to the traffic study that we had discussed with the revitalization group. Discuss that traffic study on opening Lime Street and Safford from Alterna 19 to New 19, because that's the only other street that connects Alterna 19 and New 19. And thank God, y'all got a million dollars. Maybe I'll get to that adjustment board, so we can get that what? Splash pad. Thank you, God bless.
Anyone else? Austin, do we have anybody remote?
No hands up.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes public comments. We're now gonna go to the consent agenda. Let me read the agenda. We have item number three, special event, Community Crusade Revival 2025, Annual Christmas Parade 2025, Movie in the Park, Fred Claus, Carton, Tarpon Springs, Tarpon Springs Christmas Golf Kart Parade. Number four, Satisfaction Release of Leans. Number five, Attorney Fees, Johnson Jackson P L L C. Number six, Cops and Kids. Number seven, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant. Number eight, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant for Tarpon Springs Lakeview Drive. Number nine, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant, Tarpon Springs Roosevelt and Canal Streets. Number ten, Approve Amendment One to the Emergency Medical Services, ALS First Responder. Number eleven, Renew File for Liquid Carbon Dioxide. Number twelve, Approve Novation for Myers Pumps Repairs and Parts. Number thirteen, Renew File for Landscaping Materials. Number fourteen, Increase File for Motorola Radio Equipment and Maintenance. Number fifteen, Award File for Single Source Purchase of Aquatec and Butcher Original Equipment. Number sixteen, Award File Video Surveillance Equipment System. Number seventeen, Award File Emergency Lighting and Accessories. Would any commissioner wish to pull any of these consent items?
I want to pull seventeen, but at the same time, I'd like Bob Robertson to just slightly cover the seven, eight, and nine, to know what areas are getting the infrastructure and the stormwater.
Okay. Bob, would you do that?
I think it's a great thing, so the city should know about what we're doing.
Yep.
Good evening, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. The three projects are, one project is at Grandview Drive. The amount of the total project cost is $688,000. The grant covers the construction cost $477,000 in full. The second one is a drainage issue on Lakeview Drive. On that one, the value is similar, and it's not coming up on my screen, but I'll get back to that one. And then the third project is a section of Canal Street between High Street and Roosevelt. This one addresses flooding overtops on the canal there with title check valve and a berm to prevent the overtopping.
I don't need the money, I just, I wanted the streets, just so everybody knows. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Okay, let's, um... So let's have, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items three through sixteen.
Still move?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
So, number seventeen, I just need an explanation, because every police vehicle we purchase has a lighting package that comes with it, with the vehicle, so I was concerned, I just didn't understand why we needed to spend $600,000 for more lighting when it comes with the lighting.
Well, I think, uh... They come with it, but only if you buy it, right? So, um, about $350,000 of that number, of that $600,000 is just for, for the lighting for various police units, also for regular vehicles, you know, that we use for service. And it's basically all of our vehicles, anything that's out in the public, you know, gets a lighting package put on it, and we buy it through this one particular supplier.
So let me, uh, let me first apologize, because I didn't want to put you in a spot like this. I just got in late last night, and I didn't really get a chance to see, so do you want to speak on it, or?
Yeah, is, Chris, isn't this the one where we're going directly to the manufacturer instead of the, um...
City manager, yes. So what this was, was originally, the last few years, we would buy our vehicles through Allen J, and then use their third-party vendors to outfit the vehicles with all the emergency equipment. We did research, and we saved money by going directly to vendor and not through Allen J. So we have the vehicles, we buy it on one set, we're cutting out the middleman and going directly to the installation, and that's what you're seeing the difference in.
That is excellent, I wish it was in the backup, I would've kept my mouth shut.
Yep, that's alright. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item number seventeen, Award File for the Emergency Lighting and Accessories.
Salute.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the business items, number eighteen, Increase and Approve Change Order Number One, Invitation to Bid for the construct of the new Clerk's Office Building. Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. For this item, we're asking the board to approve a change order to the Clerk's Office Construction Contract with Dimar General Contracting and Development Incorporated. Dimar's owners, Andy Cordell and Doreen Cordell, former Clearwater Vice Mayor, are here tonight as well. This change order addresses several different items, as explained in your backup. These can be characterized as upgrades, improvements, adjustments for unforeseen conditions, and in one case, a correction of an inadvertent omission. The value of the change order is just over $213,000, representing a 7.3% increase in the contract value, and distributed equally over four funding accounts, as advised by the Finance Director. That comes to about $53,000 for each of the four accounts, the Water Sewer Non-Departmental Account, the Penny Fund, the Water Impact Fund, and Sewer Impact Funds. And, Mayor, to address the question you asked me earlier today, these funds will be paid out of fiscal '25 funds, this year's current year funds. And I can get into some of the details on some of the line items if you like, but I'll conclude my staff report here at this point and stand ready for questions.
Okay, so let's have, go to Commissioner comments, questions of staff. Commissioner Banther, do you have any? Commissioner DiDonato?
No questions.
No. Commissioner Kuyas?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I did have a conversation with you, Bob, so I would like you to cover what we spoke about and how it came about, because just the first question, I know I don't have any contractors up here except myself, and I just don't know how MICA was chosen for a building that should be commercial.
Thank you, and thank you for the call on a Friday, I appreciate that. There were actually a mixture of concrete countertops and plastic laminate countertops, which, through my understanding, speaking with you, the plastic laminate and MICA are essentially interchangeable. Change was made to switch to Corian instead, so a more durable and attractive alternative. Those covered the break room, the drive-through counter, and a copy room. That covers the MICA. Did you want me to ask just the other items?
Well, I didn't even know it was Corian, but I'm just gonna let you know that's not what either granted or, you know, should have been. I think that that should have been, you know, something that the architect covered, and you know, we spoke about that as well.
Yes, we did, yes.
Because Corian and MICA are just not gonna hold up for, so... But again, I mean, I don't know what to do, it's already done deal. The other thing was to speak about... The other thing was to speak about the transitional window, why that was not done first go around.
Yes, sir, and in this case, this was the admission that I mentioned in my staff report. It should have been an electronic transaction door, and it got specified as a mechanical door, which, you know, for the drive-through window interactions. This was an item that slipped through the cracks, and we should have caught it during shop drawing review, and we missed it. As such, this corrects that admission by adding in that item that's necessary for the project. The revised cost simply brings the budget back in line with what would have, would have been anticipated had it been included from the start. So it just corrects that error.
And last but not least, if you could just cover the issue that went on with the drainage, how we were not able to know where it was.
You're talking about the storm drainage or the?
Yes, the storm drainage.
Okay. Well, we did know where it was, but there's a couple drainage items that are in this change order. The first one is, we saw an opportunity to take advantage of the extended and the money we're spending on expanding the capacity of the drainage system on Gross Avenue. The original design had the, had the stormwater off the impervious surface of the roof draining to Ring. And we saw a better opportunity, since we're building all this infrastructure over on Gross, let's get it over there, and we can put it through the pond that exists behind the property. So not only are we getting it into a bigger system, but we're getting some treatment first. So we saw a better opportunity than was originally in the design. And then there's a second part of that, of drainage improvement, where Public Works is doing a repair on the east side of the building, right behind me as a matter of fact, to capture the drainage off of the roof of City Hall, which is significant. And they're retooling all that, so again, it takes advantage of the Gross Avenue capacity that we're spending all this money to install, moves it over there. We saw an opportunity to do the same thing, where we can take the drainage off the west side of City Hall, which currently goes, makes its way to Ring. We have a way to redirect that also over to Gross, so reduce flooding on Ring and make a drainage system that works a little bit more efficiently.
So there was a positive to this as well as the issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? Austin?
There are no hands up.
Okay, I'd like to come back to the board for a motion.
Still move. Second.
If there's no further comment, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianus?
Yes.
Okay, item number nineteen, Discussion and Direction, Pinellas County Regional Resource Recovery Facility. Director Kiger?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we're going to be doing a short update on the status of the Pinellas County Regional Resource Recovery Facility, which is a proposed regional solid waste facility, and we're going to be requesting direction from the board on whether or not the city should be participating in the project. So we'll go ahead and pull this up. So what is the Pinellas County Regional Resource Recovery Facility? As I just mentioned, it is a proposed bio solids processing facility to be constructed by Pinellas County. Bio solids are one of the byproducts of the wastewater treatment process. At the end of wastewater treatment, you have clean water, and then you have all the biomass that you remove, and it's useful for other many things, like turning into fertilizer and things like that. The goals of the project are to develop a common facility for the whole county to address their bio solids processing needs, get economies of scale. And there also are some emerging regulations down the road, like PFOS and things like that, that the county desires to get ahead of. And it'll be located down by their existing solid waste facility. This is a large project at the county scale, roughly quarter billion dollars, up to maybe over four hundred million dollars, preliminary project cost estimates. This is the project schedule right now. The reason we're talking about this right now is they've done preliminary engineering, they've got sort of their concept for what they want to do and how they want to handle this project, to handle all the bio solids in the county. And they're looking for partners through inter-local agreements, and they've reached out to the city as a potential partner, and we've been in discussions with them for a number of years, that they've worked through the preliminary engineering. The overall design and construction of this would have the project ideally be delivered around 2029. They've been, as I mentioned, they're looking for partners. Right now, they're exclusively focused within the county, they're not talking to Hillsborough or Pasco or any of those local governments up there. We've already been participating in their engineering study, just providing data, engaging in their meetings, talking about the project goals, but, you know, not committed anything financially at this time. And some of, we've been talking to other local governments about their needs and if they might participate, and they're, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. Some utilities have drivers, like aging infrastructure that they need to replace, others don't have that driver, and so they're unlikely to participate. There's a few different options that they've talked to. These are all sort of, you know, planning level options for how they might participate, like reserving capacity or being a full partner for operation and maintenance. These are a little bit amorphous right now, so there's no like defined partnership terms, like payments or financial commitments or anything like that yet. It's more of like, do you want to participate? These are where these things might go long term. And it's a little bit difficult to assess this right now, also because the project delivery method's still to be determined, whether this might be a public-private partnership, might be privately owned and operated, or might be owned and operated jointly by the participating utilities, that sort of thing. The big driver that we're looking at is operating costs. Currently, the city of Tarpon Springs handles our bio solids disposal through a contractor, Appalachian Material Services. They take it from our wastewater plant, they haul it up in rural North Florida, they do all the stabilization, and then they use it for agricultural purposes, like land application for fertilizer and things like that. Currently, we're paying about ninety dollars a wet ton, which is about four hundred and fifty bucks per dry ton. The proposed, the planning level project costs, or operating costs for the future project, depending on which type of process for treatment they go with, the cost per dry ton would be in the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars per ton range, which would be quite a big increase for us. The annual operating costs at our tonnage would be somewhere between eight hundred and a million, million-two dollars. And our current total cost for bio solids processing disposal is two hundred thousand dollars per year, so it'd be a pretty significant operational cost increase. So we've looked at the drivers to participate in this project. One might be aging infrastructure. We don't handle that in-house, so we don't have any driving aging infrastructure that we need to replace, so there's no pressing need for us on that front. Right now, our current contractor is a very economical option, so we don't have a strong economic driver to do this currently. There have been some rules in the past about bio solids land application rates and nutrients and things like that, and we've discussed this with our contractor, and they are in compliance, and they seem to have a plan for how they're going to be handling this long term. And the one kind of relative uncertainty is, you know, what happens if there's future regulations on PFOS in bio solids? And, sorry about that. And, you know, so that is a little bit of uncertainty. There are no draft rules from EPA right now, so realistically, if there were to be any future regulations on PFOS and bio solids, that'd probably be like a three-to-four-year rule development and adoption process, and there's usually a run-in period, like five, six, seven, ten years to comply with those future rules. So we've got a long time before these regulations potentially might impact the city. So at this time, they're looking for a financial, like a partnership commitment, but we aren't sure of the regulatory regime yet, or what our other options might be and how other regional utilities might be addressing this. So at this time, we're leaning towards, our, the staff recommendation is to recommend against participation in the inter-local agreement at this time, but we would recommend, you know, continue, just notifying the county that we would continue to be open to like collaboration and participation in the study for like potential reserve capacity without any like financial commitment, and then just continue to monitor the situation and for the PFOS regulations and stay abreast of what our options might be long term.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's have questions of Director Kiger first, and then we'll get him, we'll get public comment, come back for a motion, then we can make comments. So I don't have any questions. Commissioner Banther, do you have any?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No, sir.
Commissioner Culias?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Of course. If we have no PFOS going into the water, how can we be subjected to PFOS in the dumping system?
PFOS can be generated by customers within, within the wastewater collection system from things like, you know, laundry and, you know, people use like legacy things like Scotch Guard and stuff like that, so it's in like clothing, it's probably in some of the clothes we're all wearing right now. So there, there are sources of PFOS within, you know, people's water uses that can generate PFOS contributions to the wastewater system.
So if we can take PFOS out of the water coming to us, can we take PFOS out of the water, out of the solid material before it's disposed of?
You can, and the way you do that is with, usually it's like an incineration process, which is what the county's looking at. So it's, PFOS is very difficult to break down, it's very resilient, that's why they use it for things like nonstick and like fire retardants and things like that. So it's a very high combustion process.
It's Teflon.
Yeah.
So if, wouldn't this go back to the lawsuit, though? Why should it be the city's issue if we didn't put it in?
The lawsuit was specifically to address the cost for utilities to treat contaminated water supplies. So there's been no litigation at the federal level lately that, you know, like any large-class actions that are similar on future wastewater regulations, because those haven't been published yet.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting.
Could you clarify your suggestion, please?
I'm suggesting a lawsuit on the other side of it. You know, if we have to pay for it coming in, we shouldn't be paying for it going out.
I think at this time, that might be a little premature, just because there are no pending regulations. So until you have a regulation, you don't have a driver for your?
Planting the seed.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Okay, I'd like to come back to the board for a motion on item number nineteen.
Still move.
Second.
Okay. Now, let me clarify.
Voting this down.
Motion on the staff's recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion is to accept the staff's recommendation to not participate in this program.
Correct.
Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianus?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go to item number twenty, Code Enforcement Lean Reduction Request. Mr. Solzman, you want to introduce that item?
Mayor, Commissioners, you have a memo that I provided with Chief Young regarding the request. We have the requesters attorney here who will go more into depth. This request had been made a while ago and was not placed before you, and it has, so from that standpoint, the request has been, as you can see from the letter that was attached for a period of time, we were finally able to bring it before you for discussion and determination, and I will turn it over to Mr. Kuskudis.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioners. You should have gotten a copy of the letter that I had sent to Attorney Solzman and to City Manager. In that letter, there were significant number of attachments and emails. My client, back in two thousand and nineteen, was cited, as the letter explains, the difficulty in trying to come into compliance over the years. Initially, and as the emails, the list of emails provide, he reached out to a contractor, had a difficult time getting the contractor to adhere to filing a permit, he actually had to let the contractor go, hired another contractor, and through that process, he had to secure an architect, secure construction plans, secure an engineer, obtain a survey, secure an appraisal because of the fifty percent rule, secure a roofer, finding out that he needed blueprints, blueprints for trusses, he had to obtain engineered trust plans, he had to secure bids from various contractors, the project was an expensive project, he had to wait four months before the trusses were even provided. And then he had to wait to schedule all the contractors, secure the asbestos survey, and then secure permits. It took quite a while, and one of the reasons is COVID. Right when he got cited, when he started moving this process forward, COVID hit. And if anybody knows, it was very, very difficult to get anybody to come out and do work during COVID. And he's here, and I would like to introduce you to Mr. Trigiano, who is the, represents the trust, which is the owner of the property, the men of trust, and I'll let him explain to you his frustration in trying to get this thing moving forward and why we're asking for such a reduction in the, in the fine. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Truly, Mr. Kuskudis basically said everything that, that happened and all the frustration that pursued COVID. I really feel like in the beginning of it, where like in two thousand, the end of two thousand and nineteen, I really felt everybody was, was price gouging. And, you know, not only the laborers, but also the materials, like tibbits, lumber, things like, people like that. So really, there's not much else to go into detail with. I think Mr. Kuskudis hit it pretty, pretty well.
I don't know, I don't know if in your package, you were provided the email correspondence and all the communications between my client and the city, so I would ask if, you know, was that part of your package, other than the letter? You could see the extensive communications that my clients had with the city, keeping them abreast of everything that was moving forward. You know, it's one thing if somebody sits idly by and lets time pass, but it's another thing when you take proactive measures to try to come into compliance, and when my client contacted me several years ago, you know, because of this frustration, first thing I told him is, look, no one's going to listen to you until you come into compliance. So compliance was paramount, and it's taken him that long to come into compliance. So even though he's working on coming compliance, you know, five hundred dollars a day, five hundred dollars a day, that adds up. And to some degree, there is a responsibility to maintain your property, but when you try to take the proactive steps to come into compliance, when you get cited by a code, and then the frustrating part of having to deal with, and, you know, we've all, you've got a contractor on the board, you know, sometimes trying to get, and I've watched it in the city, when you've had, when you're dealing with your construction projects, trying to get things moving forward on a, on a, on a, on a quick basis. So that's kind of where we're at, and that's why we've requested a reduction in the fine.
Okay, thank you. Let's go through, let's have Commissioner questions of the applicant or city attorney, and Vice Mayor Eisner has requested to ask his question first.
Was this issue created by any windstorm or anything?
No, so what it was, is there was the code enforcement called on the property next door, and the officer at that time just happened to peer over, saw the tin on the roof was needing to be replaced, and that was cascading of everything downwards, because then the trusses were bad and so on and so forth. So there was no wind damage. It would just happen to be peering over.
So here's the thing that I have somewhat of an issue with, so I'm going to ask you the questions. Did you not notice this before?
Not to the extent that we saw, we're not owner occupied.
They, they, they have a tenant who basically controls the property, manages the property as a landlord. Obviously, as a landlord, you do have an obligation to, to look at your property and make sure. But kind of what happened is you saw a problem, but as you started to peeling it back, it created a bigger issue, then another bigger issue, and, and so that's what kind of cascaded to, to why you see all the litany of things that had to be done in order to come into compliance. It wasn't just, oh, fixing a tin, fixing a tin roof, putting a piece of tin back on the roof or covering on the roof. You peeled it back, oh, your trusses are bad, or, you know, sometimes you don't know until you peel, peel everything back, and then, and that kind of.
Footers.
So, so.
So I agree with that, but the code violation board instituted a two hundred and fifty a day. I do watch the code violation board, they usually start off at a fifty dollar or a hundred dollar. Why would they go to two fifty unless there was a long period of disrepair?
There was a long period, there was a.
Why wasn't, that, my question is, why wasn't this corrected? You know, it's, it's, and I'm trying not to be. You know, it's, it's, and, and I'm trying not to be disrespectful. I'm just being, you know, observant. I read the thing A to Z. You can't wait till the thing is about to fall down and then have to go through this all. And of course, it was here unfortunate that COVID hit. But had you done this prior to COVID, you would not have had this problem. And I, I, I mean, I have had rental things and I, in, in the rental contract, you know, the owner is supposed to go in and do an inspection and not wait. And why I bring this up is because we don't only have yours, we have three different code violations that are here. And what we're doing, if we decide to reduce fees for everybody that comes before us, we're removing any power from the Code Violation Board. And, you know, they don't just, you know, nilly-willy make up numbers. So I understand that things could happen. That's why I asked you if it was done by a storm, if a tree fell on you. You know, certain things are unavoidable, but to leave something in disrepair until we get a code violation person to come and do it. And as I've watched it, they have to document so many things. I know our Code Violation Board, our, our Code Violation Person has to document everything, do everything, and then you have to get everything done, and it, it's like the horse has already run out.
Sometimes as a landlord, sometimes as a landlord, you, you have a tenant, the tenant's occupying the property. You, you know, you catch your rent every month, you know, and, and, you know, you don't know sometimes things are, are, have issues until you know that there are issues. If you look at the email correspondence back in 2019, when this first, when he first was cited, that there were, they reached out to, to a contractor engineer to start the process. So it wasn't not wait, waiting till there was, you know, too late, it's starting the process. But the process got mired in, you know, dealing with a contractor who, who delayed in getting a permit, then getting, getting fired because he wasn't getting a permit, then finding out, well, you know what? You've got trust issues. Well, you know what? You can't just go to put a trust, you got to get an engineered trust, and you got to get an architect, then you go, we got a 50% rule, so you got to go get. So it, it becomes a vicious cycle of things that you have to do before you can even start the process. And it, and, and then when, when you get hit with COVID and getting, and as he explained to you, not getting taken advantage of, but it wasn't, if you, if you look, it, it wasn't that it was ignored. If it was ignored, it's a different question, but it wasn't ignored. He was proactive in trying to get this done, and that's, and that's the difference. You know, the purpose of code is to encourage compliance. And, and when you have somebody who's trying to come into compliance, you shouldn't be penalized because it's taking them so long to come into compliance. You know, $7,500 is not, is not small change to pay, to pay for, you know, for the violation. It's, you know, it's not, it's not for free.
Right, but it's a $560,000 violation.
I understand that. I understand that.
So my thing is not, I'm, I'm not looking to stay on the fact of what happened after the code violation. I, I agree. I, I follow you wholeheartedly with everything that happened afterwards. My question is, when was the roof put on first? You know, how long ago, and when was it last inspected? I mean, you kind of have to do that. You know, otherwise, if it's up to a code violation, he's got to go through every, every house in town and, and put a code violation to let people know that they need to replace their roof, and that's not feasible.
So, so this is not an, an ordinary roof, so this is the, the part of, it's for an auto body shop.
I know.
Oh, okay, so you know, okay.
I know.
I just wanted to see if you, okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if you were aware. But, so that's why, I mean, we saw it, it's just tin on, on the trusses. The, the tenant, but didn't complain to us, had no idea. But I think just, again, when, when the officer was there looking at the other property next door to us and looked over, he's like, that could be replaced. So I, I, I get it. It just wasn't in our purview.
Again, I'm not putting the onus on you because you weren't there.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, it's your pocketbook that, that has to pay the bill, and I understand that. And, you know, people have bad tenants and they, they do things to ruin a place, and it's the owner that has to pay it. I understand all this thing. But at a certain point, every landlord has the ability in every lease to go back in and to inspect the, or have a professional go in and inspect. And this is why I'm not, I, I just don't understand how it got let go for so long.
Right.
Where it got to the point where our code violation guy went to see it. And I'm going to bring up the same thing on, on all of these because what I don't want to do is have a code violation board sit up here, take their time out every month, you know, and, and have to fight with somebody for three, four years, and then an offer comes in from 560 down to 7500 because we're setting a precedence that all you need to do is leave it go three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years, and then just work out a deal at the end that, that just removes all the power of the code violation for people to come into compliance.
And I, I, to some, what I disagree with you, Commissioner, is that it's one thing to ignore, but it's another thing to find out that you have an issue and then be proactive in trying to correct the issue instead of ignoring the issue. And so we did not ignore the issue. We were proactive in trying to correct the issue. Was he not diligent in, in inspecting his rental properties? You know, but if, you know, I, I own several rental properties. If my tenant doesn't call me and say there's a problem, to me, there's not a problem. You know, I don't, I don't invade their space because they, they, you know, I may own a piece of property. I don't invade their space. If there's a problem, they say, Mike, come and see, there's a problem. And that would, that never happened. It was never an issue. And the only reason it became an issue is because somebody from the city code enforcement officer noticed that there was a, a problem. And so when he, they tried to correct the problem, that's what started the cascade to where we're at today. So I can appreciate the fact of what you're saying, but, you know, like I said, you, you know, you don't necessarily go and invade. I don't. You know, when I, when I have a client who's, who's paying me rent or a tenant that's paying me rent and I don't get a call, I don't think there's a problem. So, thank you.
Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
Are we just asking questions or giving our opinion too? Because I got confused with Vice Mayor.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I don't have any questions.
Oh, I just asked a question.
Commissioner Kuyas?
No, I'd like to settle all these cases for a total of $5,000 and be done with it, so. I'd like to make that motion when the time is right.
Okay, let's go to public comment. We'll come back and entertain that motion. Are there any public comments on this item? Austin?
No, sir. There are no hands up.
Okay, let's come back to the board for a motion.
Make a motion to settle the cases at 424 East Pine Street, 420 Hibiscus Street, and 435 Hibiscus Street for a total of $5,000.
Second.
Okay, so our, let's go to, let's have discussion. So, you know, I, I agree with you, Vice Mayor, that, that we have to look at the circumstances and where things are allowed to get to a, to a point of, you know, degradation or disrepair. You know, I think that, given the situation with COVID and, and all the, all the delays that took place during all those, those years, I understand the situation here and, and I'm in favor of the reduced penalty. So Commissioner Banther, you have any comments?
Thank you. As a landlord myself and my brokerage manager of about 100 rental properties, I can definitely sympathize with what Attorney Kus, Kuskoudis is saying. I had a situation, it wasn't code enforcement involved, but we had something that was happening for months at one of our properties and didn't realize it till after the fact, and did our best to, to, to remedy it quickly. So, and also, I have a lot of respect for the, for the Code Enforcement Board, and I respectfully disagree with the, with the Vice Mayor. I don't, I don't look at us settling as, as negating them, whether we're not respecting their authority or, or, or like why have them? Because that board serves a purpose. But I don't believe that, 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 that purpose is to punish people who voluntarily come into compliance. That, that board is there as a stopgap to make sure people know that there are consequences for, for not coming into compliance. We have somebody here before us, and I've said this before, and I have a long track record of this back to, back, 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 back to 2013. If somebody has come into compliance, you know, willingly, and every situation's different. And, you know, Mr., we have, I think, one or two more tonight, and those, and those may differ. But for this situation, someone who's actively coming, coming to compliance, I am not going to sit up here and try and penalize them further. He's offering far above and beyond the cost of the city incurred in this process. So I, I, I wholeheartedly support Commissioner Kuyas's motion, and I hope we can settle on that this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I, I too feel that, that it's, code enforcement's always been for compliance. I don't have a lot of patience with just totally ignoring it. But I have been in the same situation as, as, as this gentleman has been under as a landlord, and sometimes you don't find out until they move out. And, and then sometimes it's worse, a lot worse than you think it is, and you start the process. And it appears to me he did start that. It says in here that it was completed August 26th of 2024. It was into compliance, so I can support the motion as, as made. But again, we're not here to punish, we're here to bring you into compliance. That's, that's my feelings.
Commissioner Kuyas?
I just, look at the situation, just understanding, hearing everything, and I mean, I'm always trying to help the residents or business owners reduce, you know, bring fines down. So it's, it's not, we try to look at case by case, but just trying to look out for people. He, he came into compliance, that one facility that got triggered by, you know, the code enforcement officer was really an open air, you know, auto facility too. So it's, it's been taken care of, just presented the facts. And it's just, you know, as we as board members can be consistent up here, looking at case by case and just being, just looking at everything and helping them, you know, get over this case by case, then I think it's a good thing. So thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So I disagree with my board here, and I understand, this is not a personal thing. So I'm, I'm not here, as was said, to punish you in any which way, shape, and form. My, my whole purpose of this is to make sure that, yes, you come into compliance, and you did. But one of the things I'm going to be bringing up is an agenda item down the road to make sure that we have a time limit to how long these compliances could come about. I understand fully about what happened during COVID, and it was an unforeseen time. My whole issue is not that. I think you did a great job from that point on. My issue is, you know, did, did your, I, I, I don't know if I can ask this question. Did your tenant move out? Is that how you found it? No. So the comment that was made earlier about, you know, you only found it out when you moved out, that's not what happened. So I can't really listen to that. But I do think it's somewhat your responsibility as a, you know, as an owner, to be able to do inspections. You'd have to know that your roof is up there 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, whatever it is. And, you know, you'd have to go in and protect your investment. And that's the part that I find I don't agree with. And then I'm also curious, because I would have to go back into that code violation meeting and find out why it was $250 a day. They don't start off at 250 a day, they start off at 50 a day or 100 a day. And so it had to be a reason that they went to 250 a day, and I don't know what that is. But again, I'm not trying to punish you as far as that goes. With me, it's, it's, I try to take in the facts and I judge whether I've done business with you or not done business, or whether you live here, you don't live here. That, that's not my point or to hurt you. I appreciate that you brought it up to compliance. I, I don't want to devalue when a code violation board sits there and brings this up. And, and I, I think maybe then we have to, as a board, look to make sure that they don't just pile on 250 a day and make these astronomical amounts of money penalization so that we should come down from 157,000 to, to your offer of 75,000, and then have a board wanting to bring it down to 5,000. Whether it's 5 or 7500 or whether it's 10,000, I'm not looking to up it. I'm just looking to say, how did it get to this point? Because what happens is they all, they all wind up, every single code violation board decision comes before us and we always lower it. And then we have some that people don't even pay it. They, they say we're going to pay it in 2008, and then we don't see them till 2018, and then they extend it again. So what I'm trying to do is not, not play negotiation. We should have a legitimate amount, or we should have it where it limits out, where it stops at a certain point, period. So that's my take on it, but no offense. I understand that you did what you could do from when you found out, but that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to amend my motion that the fine be paid within 30 days.
Okay.
Second that.
That's been seconded.
Mayor, just so we're clear, that I want to make sure that he can pay within 30 days because otherwise it reverts back.
It, it can be paid within 30 days.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
No further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 21, Code Enforcement Lien Reduction Request, case number 168000582. City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, again, this, there is a memorandum that was created by myself and Chief Young to present this case before you based on the request that was made. The attached documentation also explains what happened.
Is there anyone here to, to speak on behalf of this? No? Okay. So let's go to Vice Mayor. You want to speak first on this?
Well, this is a repeat from what I just said. I mean, we have a situation where it's just ignored. So I, I think that we either need to do a workshop and figure out how we're going to handle the Code Violation Board, whether it goes to these astronomical 560,000, 600,000. I mean, it's all meaningless. It's, it's just, it's just throwing numbers out there. It doesn't make anybody come into compliance, and, you know, then, so it's just, it's just a fictitious number that we throw out there. So, and here we have a situation where there's deadlines and, you know, I, I feel bad for our code violation. These guy, he's got to document every paperwork that he sends out, who he got it, when they got it, you know, and he's working his tail off, and we don't even have the people to come to defend themselves. So to me, I would leave this the way it is and, you know, just leave it.
Commissioner Banther?
Well, I do sympathize. I'm not, I, I do want to give some credit to, to Vice Mayor Eisner in the sense that I do think we need to have a broader discussion on how we do code enforcement. I, he and I often did, I disagree on the settlement amounts and methods, but I do agree that, that probably would be a helpful workshop after the holidays, please, if we can just get through it. Thank you. But we've met more than six months than I have in my entire career. You know, again, each, each situation's different. You know, this one, I have a little bit of heartburn with the fact that there was a fine reduction and it wasn't paid. But again, every situation's different. This, the owner passed away, that's when, I, I'm not sure if you want to call it the heir or the next of kin, whichever, whichever it is found out about it, and then has brought it into compliance, correct? It is in compliance, correct?
Yes.
So again, this is a situation that I, I don't wish, I'm, I don't wish to, to, to further penalize this person if, you know, we have the 2003 1550 offer, which more than covers our, our hard cost on this. And this situation, I, I would recommend that we approve that. But we're not doing motions, right? We're just talking.
No, we'll, we'll go to public comment, then we'll come back. Commissioner DiDonato?
Yeah, I, I very much, Commissioner Eisner, Vice Mayor Eisner did bring up a very good point. There, it, it does need to be some, somewhat over stipulated as to what a range is and, and what the tolerances are. I mean, 500 a day, on the previous example, as, as we saw, mounts up really, really fast. And I think sometimes you have to take into, in the circumstance, things that happen when you go without finding what the problem is, and you find out it's a lot more than you thought it was. So, yeah, I think we need a workshop. It's an excellent idea. I can support that. Again, the costs to the city were minimal, and, and compliance to me is the main thing. Unfortunately, there was a death in this situation that extended the time span. That's how I feel at this point in time. That's how I feel at this point in time.
Commissioner Kulyas?
I'm ready to accept the offer that they've given, and I mean, I may be the only one, but I don't think we need a workshop for code enforcement. I mean, it's, you know, the code enforcement board's going to make the decisions, they're going to come up with these fines, but we ultimately, you know, as we say all the time, you know, we're elected to make those decisions on those cases. And so I've been consistent and always trying to reduce fines for whoever it is. So that's always going to be my stance. And, you know, to Mr. Ralston, Mr. Ralston has brought a beaming light of sympathy, empathy, and being able to work with individuals in this community. And he's given people confidence to come forward, express themselves. And, you know, I'm sure if you go up, ask him, and he doesn't take it to heart, you know, he'll do his job, but he's a great fit for our community and the code enforcement board that they do the work with. And it's, I wouldn't so much look at as we're going against or, you know, we're removing what they do, it's no different from us, this board going against a recommendation from a city staff member or, you know, any other board. So I wouldn't try to take it like that, but I think it's just, you know, we move case by case and try to understand, and once they comply, we try to do them a favor considering what they've invested to try to make that compliance as well. So, thank you.
Mayor, I just one more thing, if I can.
Sure.
I don't know if our attorney is the person to go to on this, but it might be helpful, and I don't disagree with what Commissioner Kulyas just said. I want to trust the code board members that we have. My problem with it is, one time we have a $50 a day fine, and the next time we have a 250, and then we have a 500, and I think we need to have a better hold legally on that, is all I'm really asking. I don't know how we stack on that level as compared to other cities, and I would defer to Mr. Ralston.
Commissioners, just for that very issue, we have created a uniform fine system, depending on the type of fine, the recommendation that's being made. So we did adopt that going forward, so that's been helpful for the board. The second thing, if Mayor, if I may, I talked to Chief Young before the meeting, and knowing this might become an issue, if it's okay with the board, before you have any, make a determination or workshop, I'd like us to bring you an analysis of what long-term fines we have out there and the alternatives. Because remember, you could have a huge fine on a homesteaded property, and there's nothing we can do until somebody goes to sell it. On the same token, there could be actions where you decide, well, okay, we've kind of had enough, and we've done this before, where you can look into potentially an injunctive action to deal with the property, and those are usually the ones that are nuisance and hoarders. And we can also, if you so choose, on cases, move for foreclosure. So those are the options you normally have, but I'd like to give you an analysis of really what we're looking at. Are we looking at 10 properties, or are we looking, you know, whatever it is? So we can bring that forward, and then you can decide. Because I have to tell you, I agree that we have a great code officer, he's doing a phenomenal job, and the cases that are brought before the code board have all been excellent, and the code board does a really good job, so from that perspective. And the uniformity of the fines we have adopted, so that'll take effect, or that has taken effect, so you won't have those in the future.
Okay, so you know, the way I, here's, I think, and I, the dilemma here, and I understand where the Vice Mayor is coming from. If we apply these penalties and fines, we let them accumulate so that to get the attention of the property owner to go, to get into a compliance. However, if they, if they're, if they drag their feet, and I'm not saying that on this case, just, I'm talking generically, but if they drag their feet, and they, and they all know that these fines are paper fines, they're, you know, they're toothless fines, they're not, we were going to just throw every one of them out anyways and give them a much lesser fine, then, you know, then, then the fining process, you know, ceases to be a big motivator for them. So I think that, you know, I would definitely entertain whether we do a workshop or just have an agenda item to have any general discussion on some uniform process, because I think, and I understand what Commissioner Kulyas is saying, everything's, you know, case by case, but I think there is cases where people are maybe understanding that fines get thrown out anyways, and then they lose their effectiveness. So let's go to the public, and we'll come back for a motion. We can have a discussion. No, we haven't, let me go to the public real quick.
You covered everybody, and I still don't know.
I'll let you go. Is there any public comment here?
Once again, Sue Swenson, 327 Manatee. My introduction to this whole city government was through a code enforcement. My neighbor on Manatee Lane was having parties, he had 50 police calls to his house in one year. The police had to jump in the canal and look for guns, there were three suicide calls. I mean, it was daily and daily. He ended up having a $28,000 fine reduction. He is recollecting two pensions, social security, and has people other than his family living in his house, which is not allowed in our HOA. Meanwhile, he brings an attorney here who says he cannot pay because he doesn't have the finances. So it was washed, completely washed. So what do you think he continues to do today? He continues to have people living with him, and he just laughs at me, because I'm the one standing up here, two feet next to him, when my whole HOA membership left and allowed me to talk. So it really loses any oomph when you don't enforce what's going on. I love our code enforcement, I talk to him all the time, because I have another code enforcement issue in the parking lot. Hope my owner doesn't kill me, but my parking lot, where I have a business, there is, it's an old lot, it was 1950s, 1960s, it did not have a handicap spot. It did, but no one, no one allowed it, everybody ignored it, so now it's painted, and there's a sign. And one of the owners of the businesses doesn't give a flying whatever, and he parks in it every day, every single day. I've spoken to him, I've told him, he doesn't care, because it's right next to his business, the Jamaican Jerk Center. I don't give a crap. Anyway, I know it's now a police issue, but if we don't, and if we don't find these people and hold them to it, it's just a laugh, it's just a joke. I know there's extenuating circumstances with COVID and people dying and things like that, but we need to be consistent in how we do this, otherwise, they don't give a crap. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, any other public comment? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Okay, I'd like to come back to the board, entertain a motion.
A motion to accept the code enforcement fine lien request as requested by the applicant.
Second.
And have it paid within 30 days.
Let's go, let me go through the normal thing and let Vice Mayor go last. Commissioner Banther?
No further comment, but I do want to say, and piggyback off some comments, that we have a great code enforcement officer, Mr. Ralston. And unlike predecessors, which I did love his predecessors too, but I have received not one complaint about him. And I can't say that for anybody before him, whether it was deserved or not. So he's doing something well, because as we know, people here and everywhere will speak up if they don't like something, and I have not heard one negative thing, so thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Just in response to the public comment, I can agree with that certainly. I think what most of us, at least what I'm trying to say, is $500,000 gets to be a little, a little much. But yeah, we're trying to find that ground that's acceptable. We have code enforcement to enforce the codes. And so I just want to make it clear that I don't disagree with you, it's just the amounts that get to be kind of crazy, and sometimes that's not always controlled. Because beyond your circumstance, sometimes you just can't get it done as fast as you'd like to get it done. So just so you know how I stand on that, thank you.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Piggyback off of what our city attorney said, maybe it's, have a campaign to reach out to any code enforcement fine that's out there and say, hey, reach out to us in an attempt to, you know, reduce these fines and get them off the books and be done with it, you know? So that's maybe something we can work on. As far as, guys, if, you know, we stay at those 500 a day fines and stuff, we're just going to take their properties. I mean, are we just going to just take this person's property right here? You know, so it's a very fine line, and I just, I guess we're, you know, at some point we'll have that workshop, and there's got to be a way to get people to comply, and, you know, without reducing the fines to a point, but at the same time, I don't, you know, I'm not that type of person, I'll never be that type of person to try to take properties away from people who are, you know, I don't know their financial positions, but that's just not in me. So we try to do our best to get them to comply and move forward, and Mr. Ralston is a gatekeeper to compliance and true representation of sympathy and compassion and being able to work with people, so thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, comment was said about 500 a day, it was 250 a day, so I wanted to clarify that. But we had an offer for $2,300, and on a $70,000 currently owned, and that was ignored. It then went to $530,000. Mind you, this was back in, the initial inspection was in 2002. So the code board deadline was 2003. We accepted an affidavit of non-compliance, so it went to 100 a day. This was ignored for 23 years. At what point do we allow X amount of years, 23 years, 30 years? I remember back, we had a situation with a liquor store on Alt 19, was never in compliance until the brother died, and then the new brother came in and figured he would offer less money just because, whatever it was, it was either money on the table for us, or it was money on the table for him. That's what we're doing, we're negotiating with ourselves. I feel like the board somehow has their left hand in one pocket of the city and their right hand in the other pocket of the city. It's not about taking their property, it's not about trying to hurt the person, but if somebody could give me a good explanation of what we can do to bring them into compliance other than making astronomical numbers and then bringing it down and devaluing them to where most of the people see these rulings and then just don't give a hoot. 23 years is ridiculous. If we were to do a violation now, I don't think I'd see the end of when they paid in 23 years. So, you know, nobody's trying to take someone's property, but if somebody wants to come up with a better idea on how to move the person to come into compliance. Now, it's also easy to say, when you live in an area where your neighbors are also really nice on the sides of you, right? Where you don't have the people leaving garbage all over the street, they're cutting your lawn, but is it fair to the person who's paying taxes? It is our job to make sure that they have somebody living next to them that are in compliance. And when we allow for 23 years for someone to break all the rules and regulations that we have in place, and then we decide, yeah, just give us $2,300, we don't want to punish you, but we punished the people on both sides of them for 22 years. And that's the issue that I have. It's not about trying to hurt that person, it's about trying to heal the two people that are on the sides of it, and the person that lives across the street who now can't sell their house because there is a S H I T across the street. And, you know, we have them, so I get offended when I'm sitting here listening, you know, to you guys being the good nicks, and I don't want to be the bad nick, but I also want to be the correct nick. I want to make sure that the person comes into compliance, and if this person leaves something from 2002, then they don't give a hoot about this city, you know? So you're telling me I don't really have to cut my lawn, I could leave it to go astray, I could leave my garbage out, I could do whatever I want to do, and I don't care if this guy comes and writes 50 tickets for me, because eventually somewhere along the line, when I sell it, I'll just go, eh, what the heck, I'll go in front of you guys, hope you're still in office, and I could get your bleeding heart. All I'm saying is, unless you're going to come up with something that is going to correct the whole thing, we have this, is for compliance. So I don't understand why we'd be reducing this and giving them a reward for allowing 23 years to just go, you know, what the heck? I mean, to me, it just doesn't make any sense. You know, I understand the city, you know, if you have a situation where the people are down in their luck, they lost a job, I'm willing to listen to that. You know, they had an issue, you see, I agreed with your, with your motion for the $5,000, even though he offered 7,500. But I just can't allow, and I'm not going to agree, to just allow people to run ramrod and just do whatever they want and not care. There are streets in town, and we all know this, because we all get the complaints, there's cars sitting there, there's junk all over the place, and I feel bad when I drive by and I ask the person next door, how do you live like that? And they're looking to me to correct that, they're looking to you to correct it. And if we're going to sit up here and just say, eh, what the heck, you know, we'll just, when you're ready to sell it, you know, we'll just, you know, work out a deal, but, you know, you're ruining the people's homes and resale values on both sides. So that's what I pretty much have to say. I don't want to agree with this at all. This was just ignored for 23 years, going on 24.
Okay. You make a heck of a good point.
Try.
Okay, is there any other comments? Let's go to roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No.
Mayor Kolyanis?
No. Okay, let's go to item number 22, reconsideration of a code enforcement settlement agreement.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is one that the deputy city clerk was contacted, as you can tell, another history of one. Tom Trask had negotiated a settlement back in 2011. Apparently, it wasn't paid within the time period and reverted back. Originally, the agreement was to reduce it to $1,000. Now, all these years later, they've contacted the city and are requesting to see if this board will continue to agree to the prior settlement.
Okay. Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
And the property, the property is in compliance?
It's my understanding the property has been in compliance since 2011.
Since 2009.
Since 2009, so it started in '08, and it became in compliance in 2009, in that time period of a year. That's when the 42,000 was accumulated, correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. And then he had a serious accident in '07, just looking up this thing here, they're in compliance. What are, usually we have the, we have the little sheet with our hard cost, I'm sure it doesn't exceed $1,000, but is that the case?
Yes, I don't believe, I believe our costs are being covered completely.
Okay, I'll save my commentary for the second round.
Commissioner DiDonato?
You know, I just have gone, this is similar but different in that it was in compliance in 2009, and this has gone on, and there was an agreement for $1,000, and it wasn't paid, and now they want the same, it's, it is...
Case by case.
A bit of a mess.
We're also trying to clean some of them. We're trying to clean some of these up, too, by bringing it to you.
That's what it looks like, actually. I just, I'm waiting for the attorney to come back, I think that would be interesting to look at some of that, but whatever the board desires.
Commissioner Kulyas?
I'd be willing to go with 2,500, paid within 30 days.
Vice Mayor?
Wasn't there an offer made on this, city attorney?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't there an offer made on this? The offer was the, to continue at the... The offer was the, to continue at the thousand dollars, uh, that was agreed to with Mr. Trask back in two thousand and eleven. Two thousand and eleven? Yes, sir. So, we had fourteen years to forget about that offer. Well, once it wasn't paid within the time period, it reverted back. So, what would be the purpose of now agreeing to any amount of money? I mean, it's the part I just don't understand. You know, I, I just want everybody up here to understand. I did have a in length, a lengthy conversation with the city attorney about all these cases, um, today. This wasn't just, uh, you know, something imaginary I brought out of my head. And we, we kind of like discussed this. And it's like, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around not trying to hurt people, not trying to, um, but, but move things forward so that we don't lose the initiative of our code enforcement. Gentlemen, back there, Mike, and that we don't lose the code violation board and all the people that have to do things. Um, if, if we just try to get back the money that we laid out. I, I understand the code violation board is not a money-making, it's not an enterprise. But there has to be somewhat of a punishment for neglect. And that's what I was referring to when we need to do a, a workshop because I, and, and I, and it might even be a workshop where we include the code violation board to be there and give us suggestions as well, whatever it is. Um, and it could be after your holiday, Commissioner.
It's hunting season, Murphy.
Yeah, we, we don't want to, you know, disturb the Christmas holiday, I understand. Vice Mayor, I just want you to know that not only with what Mike's been doing, but we have been doing additional things in the city.
Yes, I know that.
And, you know, we've cleaned up properties, uh, that we hadn't done before. The city manager, uh, authorized that, and that was extremely helpful for the prop, surrounding property owners. Uh, and so we're not letting those go to the extent that maybe they went in the past. So, I think you're doing a great job. I've always said that to you. And we're, we are cleaning up a mess that's been there for many years. But I do think we need to fine tune how we handle these cases. Because otherwise, we get up here and we just televise that, just, just throw a number out there and the commission will just agree to it and, you know, be bleeding heart. So, um, to me, the offer was made, it was accepted, and it was just left there to sit. So.
Mayor, city clerk?
I, I just wanted to add when, um, just, uh, it's in the memo. But, um, I just wanted to make everyone aware that when Mr. Frey and his son did come to meet with a deputy city clerk, um, he said that as a result of his accident, he did suffer significant disabilities and other financial hardships and legal, uh, proceedings. And, uh, so now that's why he was coming forward now.
Okay, so, which I could feel for the person, don't get me wrong, but there always has to be a power of attorney to ma, making decisions for the house as well. So, I know the son is now involved, um, you know. I, I would like to have that person, you know, um, be able to deal with it. You just can't leave these things ten, fifteen years, that's the bottom line. So, that's where I'm at.
Uh, if we, when we come back for a, a motion, um, I ju, I just did a calculation. If, if, if it was one thousand dollars in two thousand and eleven and we were using even a three percent interest rate on growth, it would be fifteen hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents today. Uh, if we did five percent, it would be nineteen hundred and seventy-nine, so it'd be around two thousand dollars. Uh, what the, if they had paid the fine in two thousand and eleven, in today's dollars, it's probably close to two thousand dollars. But let, let's go to public comment, come back for a, a motion, we can talk some more. Any public comments on this item? Austin?
Sir, there are no hands up.
So, like, come back for a motion. I, I'd like to entertain a motion, at least at minimum, we, we get some interest on this money. Um, because there was no reason why it wasn't paid in two thousand and eleven at a thousand bucks. But anyways, that's my two bits. Commissioner Culias?
If everyone gets their comments in, I'll make a motion, like I said, for twenty-five hundred. Be a little bit.
It's right in the ballpark.
Payable within thirty days?
Thank you. Motion to pay twenty-five hundred dollars to be paid within thirty days.
Second.
Is there further conversation on this?
You brought it up fifteen hundred more than the mayor?
He said it originally, but before the mayor even said it.
I was just reaching for my heart, that's all.
You're out of control tonight.
All right, roll call, please.
I do have some commentary for us.
Oh, you do, I'm sorry.
I want to say something. I do, I do, uh, because I agreed to the workshop, and I don't think, well, I don't agree with the vice mayor on, on how we're settling these things. I do think he brings up some good points about consistency and fairness and the purpose of codes to being troubled neighbors in compliance. I, my parents have a, oh, I'm not gonna go there, but there's, there's people that serve on boards that are just as guilty as the people that we're actually finding. Anyway, but the issue is this. I, this isn't, you're never, though, I, I think we can better fine tune this for sure, absolutely. But this is, there's always gonna be gray areas. Every situation's different. I think it's the job of our staff, somewhat of the code enforcement board, to be, to be the black and white. These are the rules, these, these are our statutes, and these are the fines. But, but that comes from us. And then it's our job as a board to examine all these gray areas. So, yes, well, I do agree with the, uh, with the vice mayor. We need some better control over this and some better consistency. Just, just as was pointed out, in every single case, case, uh, case tonight is not equal. So, yes, I, I do agree we need that, but also we're still gonna have to review every single ca, case up here. And there's gonna be exceptions because not everything's black and white. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes. Okay, let's, uh, we're gonna move, uh, at the request of the, uh, planning director. We're moving item number twenty-seven up to, uh, our first, uh, ordinance resolution. Uh, and this is an application for annexation. Ms. Vincent?
You want to read part of this?
I'm sorry.
Quasi judicial, so.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity at a quasi judicial hearing. It is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to fight against the applicant. Swear in the witnesses? Is there anyone else who's gonna speak? Please stand and raise your right hand. All right, now, do you swear affirm your testimony before the com, Board of Commissioners? It's the truth, so help you.
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Vincent?
Uh, good evening, this is application twenty-five dash fifty-five, uh, for property at six thirty July Drive. Uh, this is a duplex, um, the application is to annex the property into the city of Tarpon Springs. Along with that annexation, we also have to assign, um, a, uh, future land use map and rezoning, um, under the city's codes, um, and conference of plan. Uh, this, this is the property on July Drive. It's a little bit of an odd shape. You have a house, um, and a garage on the property. Just a little different look. This is, uh, Dixie Highway, um. Zooming out a little bit, you can see the, the areas that are in color are those properties that are already in the city of Tarpon Springs. Um, so the site is directly a budding property that's in the city. Uh, zoning in the area, um, currently is R seventy, that's what's being proposed as we annex it in. Uh, the sketch and survey of the property, uh, this is the single family house. This is the garage structure. Um, the house was built in nineteen eighty-six, so this has been here for, for quite some time. Um, the, the plat itself for the subdivision was platted, I believe, in the nineteen twenties. Uh, this is really not readable, but this is the, uh, survey over top of the aerial photograph. So, for our review criteria for annexation, um, there's no issues with, um, does, it's not part of a type A enclave. It's not creating an enclave. We do have the ability to serve the property, um, with appropriate utilities. This, it already is served with city water, um, it is actually on septic. Um, July Drive is a Pinellas County road, uh, it's already at our, already in our fire district. Um, so upon annexation, it would also be subject to, uh, Tarpon Springs Police. Uh, there are no active code enforcement cases on the property as it sits at now in Pinellas County. There is a detached garage on the property that does, that does not meet minimum required yard setback, uh, yard, rear yard setbacks, both in the county as and nor would it meet it in the city. Those are deemed legal nonconformities that would just continue if the property's annexed, and it's not expected to place a burden on the city. Um, the, uh, there are no issues with the future land use map amendment. This would go from residential urban in Pinellas County to residential urban, um, in the city of Tarpon Springs. And that's consistent with, uh, the area, the surrounding area. Uh, this is in our place-based area map in the neighborhood suburban, which is really just kind of keep things as is, um, so that's what we're doing. Uh, the rezoning would go from Pinellas County, um, I believe it's R three to the city of Tarpon, zoning district of R seventy. Uh, again, co, uh, similar to what's already in the surrounding area. Staff recommendation is to, um, approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, annexing the property into the city. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, uh, is amending the future land use map from the Pinellas County residential urban to the city of Tarpon Springs residential urban category. And ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen, amending the zoning atlas from the Pinellas County, excuse me, it's R four, which is one, two, and three family residential to the city of Tarpon Springs, a designation of R seventy, which is a one and two family district. Uh, this was properly advertised, we've received no responses. Planning and zoning board did review this, um, on September fifteenth with six members and did recommend unanimously for approval. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Board, have any questions? Okay. Let's go through, uh, board questions, uh, Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No, sir.
Commissioner Culias?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
Do they have to come in compliance with the garage?
They do not. It's, it's not, it's legally nonconforming, um, you know, so there's no code enforcement case on it. The only way that it could come into compliance would, you know, literally be to tear it down. Um, the applicant may wish to speak to this. Their intent, um, there's actually an adjoining property to the south that is under same family ownership, and they want to actually have the garage be, become part of their property to the south. That's really not part of this discussion, um, but that will actually make it more conforming when they do that.
Do they have to go before the Board of Adjustments for a variance?
No, only if they were going to increase the degree of nonconformity at this point.
So, what happens if somebody wants to put in a viol, a, uh, code violation?
We'll, we'll deal with it. I, 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 I mean, I, I'm being somewhat flippant, but.
Just asking.
This is, this has existed since nineteen eighty-six in Pinellas County. I don't think there's going to be anything different about it when it's annexed into the city of Tarpon Springs.
We, we brought up that issue and discussed it at planning and zoning. I mean, the applicant knows that that's something that could happen. Okay, I was just asking the question.
I understand.
I'll ask questions that just make you make, mm.
Thank you for that.
Would the applicant, uh, like to come forward and speak? Okay, city attorney?
Mayor, would, uh, I would request that you vote on each, there's three ordinances to vote on each one individually. Um, if that's okay, I'll read them by title, uh, and, and then ask, uh, the board to, um, act accordingly. If that's okay.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five twelve, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing zero point three zero acres, more or less, of real property located at six three zero July Drive, approximately a hundred and seventy feet east of Dixie Highway and including lot seven and portions of lot six and eight of High Point Park subdivision. Application twenty-five fifty-five, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That is ordinance twenty twenty-five twelve, read by, uh, title only on first reading. It was published on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Second reading will be August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and we anticipate, uh, publishing notice on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there any public comments on this item? Yeah. He said August twenty-eighth, second reading. What'd you say?
The second reading said what? Second reading is October fifteenth. I said that, uh, excuse me, Oc, October twenty-eighth. I said August as the date that we published it the first time.
Any public comments? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Okay, come back to the board for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, if there's no comments, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes. City attorney?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for zero point three zero acres, more or less, of real property located at six three zero July Drive, approximately a hundred and seventy feet east of Dixie Highway and including lot seven and portions of lot six and eight of High Point Park subdivision. Application twenty-five fifty-five from Pinellas County residential urban, RU, category to city of Tarpon Springs residential urban, RU, category, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That is ordinance twenty twenty-five thirteen, read by title only on first reading. Publication was August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Second reading will be October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, with the anticipated publication on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Any public comments on this item? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Okay, let's come back to, I come back to the board for a motion?
So moved, second.
If there's no comment, roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas for zero point three zero acres, more or less, of real property located at six three zero July Drive, approximately a hundred and seventy feet east of Dixie Highway and including lot seven and portions of lot six and eight of High Point subdivision. Application twenty-five fifty-five from Pinellas County R four, one, two, and three family residential district to city of Tarpon Springs, R seventy, one and two family residential district, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That is ordinance twenty twenty-five fourteen, read by title only on first reading. Advertisement was August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Second reading is October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, with the anticipated publication on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is there any public comments on this item? Austin?
No, sir, there are no hands up.
Can I come back to the board for a motion?
So moved, second.
If no further comment, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Thank you. Okay, let's get back on, on track here. We'll go to number twenty-three, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five sixteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending portions of chapter twenty of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, increasing the water sewer and reclaim water rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, October first, twenty twenty-five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, October first, twenty twenty-six, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, October first, twenty twenty-seven, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and fiscal year twenty twenty-nine, October first, twenty twenty-eight, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, and providing for an effective date. This is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five sixteen, read by title only on second reading. Publication was September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, uh, Thomas Keiger, uh, Public Services Director. Uh, we've talked about this one, uh, quite at length. This is an important part of our, uh, financial plan for the, uh, water and sewer utility. Um, and, uh, yeah, this is the second reading, so I'd be happy to entertain, uh, any additional questions from the board, uh, at this time.
Commissioner Banther, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Culias?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Do we have any?
Fuck that down.
Do we have any public comment? Austin?
No, sir. There are no hands up.
Okay, come back to entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
There's no further comment? Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item number 24, ordinance 2025-17.
Ordinance 2025-17, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending portions of Chapter 20 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, adopting the impact fees for water and sewer connections for fiscal year 2026, effective January 1st, 2026, and providing for annual impact fee adjustment each fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2026, and on October 1st of each year thereafter, based on inflation rates for construction. That is ordinance 2025-17, read by title only on first reading. Second reading will be October 14th, 2025. Publication is anticipated for October 1st, 2025.
Mr. Keiger?
Thank you. Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. This is also an important element of our financial management plan for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and Water and Sewer Utility. When we were developing the rates, the rate schedule for the next few years, one of the desires was to find additional sources of revenue that would not have any impact to existing residents. And impact fees were quickly identified as one of those potential sources. They had not been updated since 2018, I believe adopted in 2019. And so the goal of impact fees is ultimately to ensure that growth pays for growth and the development pays for development. And impact fees are dedicated to expanding capacity for water and sewer utilities to cover additional growth as our population increases over time. And so the desire was to update the impact fees to account for the full cost of our infrastructure capacity. Based on current construction markets, the construction costs of infrastructure has increased and changed quite significantly since the late 2010s. And it's considered a best practice to update your impact fees when you do substantially changes to your capital improvement plan. With that in mind, we contracted with Florida Rural Water Association to conduct the engineering study to assess the value of our infrastructure capacity. If we have any detailed questions, we do have Mike Chase, who is the professional engineer who did that study on behalf of Florida Rural Water for the city. And we felt that this was a really good fit. They specialize in working with small and rural utilities. I would also like to acknowledge Daryl Vasey, who is our water vision manager, and he was the project manager for this study. All in all, our current impact fees have not been updated in quite some time. We are recommending, there are two different methods for adopting impact fees. One is the remaining useful life option, and the second is full replacement value. Our historic practice as a city has been to do remaining useful life. What that means is that you evaluate all of your infrastructure, like your water plant, your wastewater plant, and your pumps and things like that. And if they're fully depreciated in the financial world, they're not valued in the study. The full replacement value assumes that you are evaluating all of your infrastructure at the full cost to build everything new. So we decided we recommend sticking with the existing policy. That was, you know, something that we discussed with individual board members. And you can see here that, you know, similar to many of our construction projects, the cost of water and sewer capacity has increased quite significantly since 2018, 2019 to 2025. And when that happens, over time, if we add new houses and we add new people, we have to put in new pumps and build new wells to serve those people. And if the impact fees don't cover the cost of that infrastructure, it becomes a de facto subsidy for every new connection. And that's borne by the existing ratepayers, and we wanted to avoid that. So all in all, we are recommending adoption of remaining useful life option through this ordinance. This also accounts for tying the future rate increase, the future increase of impact fees to the engineering construction cost index to make sure that we don't continue to lose ground. And ultimately, this will result in about $250,000 a year for infrastructure that will not be borne by existing residents, but will be paid self-funded for future capacity through new connections. And we are recommending adoption.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Commissioner questions. I'll begin. Director Keiger, I want to thank you so much for, I know you've got a lot on your plate and you've had to digest a lot of information and you're, anyway, I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate it, even if I give you a hard time about your tardiness.
Tardiness?
But I understand. The, I understand you introduced me to a guest. Do you have a guest that was supposed to help you with the presentation of some of these ordinances?
Yes, we have in the audience. Shall I enter? Yes, this is Amira Ali. She is a student at St. Pete College, and she'll be offering public comment shortly as part of her assignments as a student in public policy and administration.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banther, you have any questions?
No, but I do echo the gratitude of the mayor. You've taken a lot of, I don't want to say shots, but a lot of questions and arrows up there, and you've done well, and thank you very much.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I too appreciate the time and effort you put into this. Thanks.
Commissioner Culias?
Thank you, Tommy, for being creative with this one. You know how I feel about looking out after the residents, not having them take on the burden of a lot of the improvements in town, so this was great and thought out. And I know I've been tough on you, but it's been, you know, just good that you worked on this one too. So thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Well, my apology came to you when we spoke, but I'll give you a second apology. I really appreciate, you know, you always come up and you always somehow can get the answer and appease this board, which is not so easy to do sometimes, especially when those arrows are coming quick at you. With these impact fees that we charge, they are more so to pay the hookup, really. Not so much, I know you keep talking about that it allows us to dig new wells, but how much of it goes to the well versus how much of it goes towards the hookup?
So these are, these are connection fees, so the funding is specifically put into separate funds that's tracked, and you can only spend these funds on capacity expansions or capital projects that are used for improving infrastructure capacity. So, you know, in the past, we've used these funds. Like right now, the biggest project we have funded is the replacement of the Lyman-Hughes lift station. That's a textbook example of what impact fees are used for. We built a lift station probably 20, 30 years ago. It's over on the east side of town near the police station. And over time, you have lots of new customers come and they build things, they build new businesses, and they connect. And over time, that lift station became overburdened. It's no longer meeting its level of service. It's, you know, kind of precarious with its pumping capacity. And so we're using the sewer impact fees to upsize that lift station, improve the capacity, to address the growth needs that were happening in that area.
So who pays the hookup fees?
The, the impact fees and the connection fees, they're paid for by the developer or the builder. You know, or if you're connecting a new unit, you know, whoever the property owner is ultimately.
So now you got me a little confused, because you said the same thing. The impact fees are used for new wells, or the impact fees are used for the hookup from the new location?
We have a separate fee schedule that addresses like new meters and things like that.
Okay. So there's two separate things, that this is just for new wells and lift stations?
Yes, this is exclusively for larger, you know, infrastructure capacity type projects.
That's my only question. Thank you. And I always appreciate our day before meeting that we have over the phone, so even if I'm not in the same, you know, state.
Okay, let's go to public comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. My name is Amira Ali, and my address is 3432 Hunting Creek Loop. I just wanted to start by saying thank you so much to Mr. Keiger. He helped me so much. Tonight, the board is considering ordinance 2025-17, which proposes adopting updated impact fees for water and sewer connections beginning January 1st, 2026. This is an important public policy decision because impact fees are not simply another charge. They're a way to ensure fairness in how we fund our critical utility infrastructure. Right now, when new homes or businesses connect to our water and sewer systems, the cost of expanding and maintaining that infrastructure often falls back on the existing ratepayers. By updating the impact fees, we shift these costs to where they belong, on the growth that creates the demand. This helps keep utility rates more stable for current residents while ensuring that we have the funds needed to maintain safe, reliable service for everyone. These fees were not set arbitrarily. They're based on a professional capacity study conducted with the Florida Rural Water Association, which carefully examined the costs of providing new connections and future system upgrades. The stakeholders affected are many: our city leadership and staff, who must implement and manage this, the developers and builders, who need to account for the updated costs in their projects, future customers, who are going to pay the fees at connection, and of course, the existing residents who benefit from not having to subsidize growth. Ultimately, this ordinance is about balance, and it ensures growth pays for growth while protecting the investments of our current residents. I encourage thoughtful discussion tonight, and I support moving this ordinance forward. And I wanted to thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you very much. St. Pete College is doing well. Any other public comments? Austin?
Yes, sir. There is one hand up. I will unmute them now. Caller, please state your name and your address for the record, and make sure you are unmuted.
Good evening. Here at LACAS 514, Ashland Avenue. Can you hear me?
Sure. Yes, we can.
Okay. Let's get down to the nitty gritty. Option A, remaining useful life basis, is to capture the existing costs of running the city's water and wastewater utility. However, option B, the replacement value, it says to capture the true and sustainable cost of running the city of Tarpon Springs water and wastewater utility. So if you don't want to put this on the backs of current residents and users, then that really should be the option. Now, I understand the hesitancy of moving those up to that higher rate. And I think it's on page five where you talk about the water finding, the 4130 ERC for the remaining use, and the 5790 for the replacement value. And then for the wastewater, it's 3340 for the evaluated fee and 3860 for the replacement value. I would suggest as a compromise, maybe you split the difference on these. So on the first one, the 4130, 5790, that comes out to about 4900. And if you split the other one, it comes out to about six grand. Now, this definitely would put you on a more solid footing for your capacity. And maybe Tommy will explain to Commissioner ME the difference between an impact fee and a hookup fee. The hookup fee is when you actually hook up to the water service. But I would recommend at least some debate about maybe moving somewhere in the middle. So you're doing more than just remaining useful life, because you know with inflation, if a pipe goes out, or as Tommy mentioned, a lift station you need to do repairs five years from now, those costs are going to be higher, and you ain't going to have the money to do it unless you start putting some aside. And just like the loan, it's a way of amortizing those costs over the life of the project. So thank you for your time. You all have a good evening. We'll be listening on.
Okay, Austin, anymore?
No, sir. That is the last one.
Thank you. I'd like to come back to the board to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Is there any further comment on this motion?
Yes, I'm just, for clarification, was there a recommendation for either option A or option B?
The ordinance includes option A. So that was, that was the recommendation, although, you know, if the board wanted to consider option B, we...
I got a few questions. All right, so the motions, okay. This option A is remaining useful life. What is that at a gauge again?
So an easy analogy, you know, we don't have one, but imagine we had an old water tower, you know, from 50 years ago, right? Like many small towns do. You need a certain amount of storage. In that sort of analysis, when you do remaining useful life, that asset's fully depreciated. The value of that asset in the capacity study is zero, because it's fully depreciated. So you depreciate all of your assets over time to sort of capture like the fact that things age, and you're, it's sort of the responsibility of the ratepayers and stuff like that to maintain your stuff over time. But if you add enough people, eventually you have to make a bigger water tower, whether it's old and it's still in service and it has, you know, and it's still in use or not. So the replacement value is, it is a more conservative approach from a financial perspective in ensuring that there's little to no costs going back into the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund that address growth or address new capacity needs. And I would also like to point out one thing that we've discussed quite a bit with Florida Rural Water was, you know, the board obviously does have the option to look at what the true replacement value is of all these assets and adopt as a policy like 80% of that or 60% of that or something of that nature.
Okay, so the replacement value is basically enough money to help take care of what's needed, but also help invest in future projects as well to get start, you know, future capacity, basically?
In the water tower analogy, in, when you do that analysis for what your cost of providing capacity is, it would be the cost of building a new water tower.
Okay. Can I piggyback off basically our water rates from last time? Isn't that basically, isn't option B above the, you know, the magic line? As opposed to like option A? Option A is more like the magic break even point?
The magic line is our index for operational cost increases. If you look at the bin of services that we have to purchase, like, you know, chlorine and electricity, in aggregate, that tends to go up 4.3% a year. Capacity fees or impact fees are tied just to the cost of your capital assets. Basically, it's construction costs.
Do you feel comfortable with option A with, you know, future stuff? I mean...
Option A, we recommend it as a continuation of existing city policy. If the board wished to adopt a number like in between those two numbers, or say 75% of the full replacement value or 80% of the full replacement value, that would be financially beneficial to the utility long term, for sure.
Okay, well, there's a motion for option A right now. I'll make some comments here in a second.
Any, any further comments on either of these? Okay. Commissioner Culias, you want to?
Yeah, I just want to do this 80% of 5790, basically. It's 4600. I mean, I think we're, we need to go in between, somewhere between option A and option B. That way we can, it's, it's no different from the water sewer rates in which, you know, we're doing some increases to help.
Are you good with that, Tommy? If I, if I reset my motion, would that...
The request is to reset the motion.
You're talking about going in between option A and B, correct? A little more than A, but like less than B?
We would be perfectly content with that.
Okay, I can, I will reset my motion if you want to make that motion.
I'd like for us to make a motion to do 80% of the replacement value of option B.
Second.
Mr. Keiger, are you good with that?
I'm very good with that. I would probably look to the city attorney for guidance. Since the numbers are written in the ordinance, should we specifically list the values there in the, in the ordinance and strike those in the ordinance?
We'll, we'll make that change before we have the second reading.
That's right.
Okay.
Is there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianas?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Good job.
Okay, item number 25, Resolution 2025-59.
Resolution 2025-59, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing wholesale water charges to Duke Energy for service to their Anklode Electric Generating Station in Pasco County, effective November 1st, 2025.
Mr. Keiger?
Thank you. Thomas Keiger, still Public Services Director. So the, again, this was similar to the last topic in that we were looking to find sources of revenue to improve the financial health of the utility that hadn't been updated in a while and also resulted in minimal impact to existing residents and ratepayers. We have a unique wholesale water rate with... We have a unique wholesale water rate with Duke Energy's Anklode Power Station. This dates to, prior to the construction of the water plant, it was a contract that was negotiated to, they had a need for water for their power generating station, we were trying to build a water plant, and we needed places to put wells and infrastructure to support the water plant. So the city entered into the agreement with Progress Energy at the time, and it was a mutually beneficial agreement. We agreed to provide them with water at a, effectively like, an at-cost rate inclusive of lots of things, including capital replacement costs and things like that. And in exchange, they would provide us access to their power line corridors for well construction, and some of their other property, for some of the other critical infrastructure for the RO process. This, the value of the wholesale cost of water had not been examined since, again, the late 2010s. So, we elected to work with StanTech in this case, who normally does our rate analysis and economic analysis, to look at what the cost, the wholesale water cost ought to be, based on the terms of the contract. The current wholesale water rate is $5.32 and some additional decimal places per 1,000 gallons, based on, you know, updated chemical costs, electrical costs, all sorts of things that have changed since 2017. The updated rate would be $7.52 roughly per 1,000 gallons, and this is effectively to ensure that we're continuing to, you know, provide water, you know, to them per the terms of the agreement, but also not lose money in this case. One item that was, we talked about this back in March, when we asked for direction, and the vice mayor, what happened, how did this get out of line? And there were sort of two things that contributed to the separation between the wholesale rate and the actual cost of production, one of which was, we had adopted some lower-than-inflationary rates, rate increases over time. This rate was tied to our annual water rate changes, and that included a reduction in water rates back in 2021, and then a couple of years of rate freeze, so that, this rate was subject to that. And at the same time, operational costs continued to increase while the rates, while that rate was frozen. That caused some separation. And then additionally, you know, we did experience, you know, quite a bit of operational cost increase, as, you know, over the last, you know, seven, eight years, as a result of, you know, price increases and things like that, and also as a result of the water plant, you know, aging in, and the water becomes a little bit saltier over time as you develop the well field, and so your operational costs go up a little bit, as the water gets saltier. So with that in mind, we revisited this. This will generate approximately $136,000 per year in additional revenues for the water and sewer utility, again, which will not be directly borne by the city's residents.
Commissioner Banther, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No, sir.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Since this is my topic, yes. I had a question for you. You just said that they got a reduction when the city gave a reduction to the residents?
Yes, sir.
So why didn't they get an increase when the city got an increase?
They did, but because of the reduction, was a one-time reduction, it's sort of, you know, in ideal world, you want your rates and your operational costs increases to be going up about the same every year, together, and with the board elected to adopt a rate decrease and rate freeze, this rate was subject to that rate freeze and the rate decrease as well, while, you know, electricity and chemicals and things like that continued to go up.
So did we not give a increase to any of the residents for the eight years as well?
We did, but that one-time drop, you know, is what resulted in that separation between your operational costs and your wholesale rate.
That's where I'm going with the story. So, before '21, before the rate drop, we gave increases to the residents, but did not give an increase to Duke Energy?
This rate was increased by the annual rate increase that was, that the residents bore as well.
As nauseating as I listen, could we at least adopt something that they will now coincide with any rate increase that we have going forward, and not where it goes to eight years? Because I mean, when I listened to you, I wasn't blaming you by any means, because I know you just took it on. I just, I'm looking to shoot somebody. You know, I mean, this had to be a loss. I mean, I don't know, I just don't understand how you could just leave this by the wayside. They're our largest user of water. How do you leave them to not you? And I don't even know how you could explain this. It's just, it's just a lack of following through on things that, you know, you're just putting it on the residents.
So, I will say, we do have a solution built into this, into this resolution for that externality. So the resolution specifically calls out that this rate will be increased annually by the annual rate increase adopted by the board for all of the water and sewer rates, or by the 4.3% operational cost index that we've just assessed in our rate study, whichever is greater. So if we continue to have our adopted rates, rate increases that go up, this rate will go up with that. And if the board elects in the future to adopt some other, like, lower rate or something like that, at the minimum, this rate will continue to increase at 4.3%, so it doesn't lose ground against operational costs.
I mean, that's all I could ask for. I just don't want this to happen again. You know, it's one thing to mess up the first time, fool me once, I've been fooled, fool me twice, I'm the fool, so I don't want to have that second comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's go to public comments. Any public comment? Austin?
Yes, sir, there is one public comment. Caller, please state your name and address for the record, and please make sure you are unmuted.
Peter, come on.
Let's go.
Good evening. Peter Laxas, 514 Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Tommy, for finally coming out and explaining the 4.3% increase, because that is a valid factor in, for the future rate. So maybe Commissioner Me missed that part in the backup. But I do think that this is a good move, because from my understanding, new state law has come into place where impact fees will be limited by new state laws. Maybe Mr. Kiger can elaborate on this. So this may be your last chance to raise impact fees for a while. So between your attorney and Mr. Kiger, you might want to determine what your limit is as far as timeframes about renewing any new rates, so you can fix the rates here in a way that will sustain it through that timeframe, that you would be allowed to change impact fees at that time, because that is going to be something significant, another thing that our legislature is imposing upon our cities. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Austin, anybody else?
Of course not.
No, sir, that was it.
All right. Let's come back to the board for a motion.
No move.
Second.
Okay, is there any, if there's no further comment, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes. Item number 26, Resolution 2025-60.
Resolution 2025-60, a resolution of Board of Commissioners, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting the legislative appropriation request application of project administration department to the state of Florida for two stormwater improvement projects, and one water main renewal project to resolve flooding issues, mitigate storm surge impacts, and replace aging galvanized water mains in the historical area of Tarpon Springs.
This resolution is support from the board for us to apply for state appropriation funding. You heard Representative Anderson earlier. We were awarded $1.1 million this year. I'm now sending the DEP tomorrow, once the mayor signs our grant agreement. This year, we're actually applying for, Bob was incorrect, we're actually applying for $2.4 million. So Representative Anderson will be surprised. These are for three projects, two stormwater projects, one of them is the Ross property, the other one is Pinellas Trail Culvert, and then there is a water main renewal project, the North Distant Heights Water Main Project. And the total of those three are the 2.4, and we have a one-to-one match, so the city will also have to front 2.4 to match that total, then. If you have any questions?
Commissioner Banther, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No, sir.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Just want to thank PJ and her, you know, I guess just her and whoever other department she works in, because she's brought millions to the city.
Thank you. It was a group effort, Charles and Bob and the two chiefs. It was a group effort.
Thank you. No comments.
Vice Mayor?
So I want to thank you also, PJ, but I know Bob did very minimal on that, but just kidding.
Thank you. Thanks.
But thank you. I appreciate all that you do. It was a blessing to get that kind of money. You know, the residents are going to enjoy that. I mean, you know, we always get those calls on flooding, and hopefully this will rectify at least three projects, and I look forward to getting more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
PJ, let me ask you. Are you Harvard or Tillison right now?
I'm Harvard. The pages are admin assistant. She's the tall girl, I'm the short girl.
Oh, okay. Sorry, we're in a confusion. I can blame the city manager for that. All right, so, is there any public comments on this? Austin?
Yes, sir, there is one public comment. Caller, please state your name and your address for the record, and please unmute yourself.
Sixth Commissioner.
Peter Laxas, 514 Ashland Avenue. I'll be quick. I think this is great that you're going to ask for money from the state, hopefully it doesn't get vetoed at the end like last year's monies did. I would also recommend, being that Mr. Anderson was there, you also send some notice to State Senator Hooper, who believe is still our senator in this area. And lastly, you may want to, at some point, figure out a way to have a liaison from a member from the board who does some lobbying for ourselves. I know the city manager could do a little bit of that. Some can be done by Mr. Robertson and the projects, but I think it's time for a commissioner to either be delegated or given authority to reach out and start doing a little bit more direct lobbying, because sometimes we get forgotten up here. And I'm talking both, not only the state, but the county, and the federal level also. So we've got three places we need to start focusing more on, and just tossing that out as a thought. Thank you. Good day.
Okay, Austin, anybody else?
No, sir, that is it.
Okay, I'd like to come back to the board for a motion.
No move.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further comment, roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
We got one item.
One more ordinance.
Mike, come on, please. We got one item.
We'll take five minutes, okay? Five minutes.
Renee was going to take us home.
I had to play the old list. You guys can bring...
I have the under.
We're going to get there, don't worry.
Who took the under?
I was going to take the under.
I took the over, because I was wrong last time. I was wrong last time.